August eighteenth, the Republican Party is seeking permission. If you haven't silenced your phones unless you do that at this time, I'd ask Richard to lead us in a prayer, and Shirley, you do. And Richard?
About, about me. Lord, we just come to you today, and we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day, and we appreciate so much the weather we received. Lord, we ask you now to be with us just tonight as we go into the businesses, the business of our community, and help us to look at our next year's budget, some and other things that we're about to enter into, and Lord, just help us in our decisions that they be the right decision, and lead us, Lord, all the way through this. We ask it in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Savior and our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Let's rejoice to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the Texas flag, I put my dignity, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Public comments? We have nothing on public comments. We have approved the minutes of the July twenty first, August seventh, and August fourteenth meeting. The August fourteenth meeting, you've got a corrected copy in front of you because it showed Richard here, and Richard was not here, so has that been corrected? Shirley, you have an update or corrections, additions you'd like to put on the July twenty first. Shirley?
Yeah, it's not really a correction. It's just under, um, on the second. Yeah, on the third page, under the, uh, item about the parts of the playground equipment, after it says that Savannah had, uh, had, oh, I should, had suggested an additional forty thousand instead of just twenty-five thousand. I would like for you to insert, uh, either a couple of statements or paragraphs stating that, uh, I specifically stated I was in favor of the playground equipment, but preferred funding than requested amount, and then let them come back later if needed, because that way, somebody ever looks at that and wants to know why I voted no, there'd be a reason there. Why'd she do that?
Okay. So you need to approve with that?
I'm letting them make their notes, sir.
You need to approve with that addition, Lord?
We could approve with that update, uh, and then make sure that that's stated. It's, Shirley, what, we could actually?
We can approve next time.
Yeah, I think we should on that. That's gonna be a lot of information to get that right on the July twenty first. We'll just hold that and make sure we get that corrected and get that done. Okay, so we have the other two that set to admit, they're much shorter, on the, the August seventh and August fourteenth. We'll entertain a motion for those three.
I'll make motion to approve the August seventh and August fourteenth, that's it.
All of us stand and vote on the fourteen.
Motion from Tom and second from Richard to approve the August seventh and August fourteenth. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And say no. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Financial report.
Lindsay?
Y'all fighting over this or what?
No, Lindsay pretty much did this on her own, so.
She did?
Yeah, 'cause I was busy with budget, and, uh, she remembered what we had done, and had her little checklist, and she only had a few questions for me, so that's really good.
Up, up. That's a best run over, Lindsay, right there. Uh, I just am curious about one thing. As we get down to the end of the year, it shows on the general fund, we spent ninety-seven percent of our money. What is your projection for the next two months? Are we pretty well gonna chew up that three hundred thousand dollars?
We hope not, but Savannah has some, uh, I mean, I think we still have some things outstanding from the fire department.
Yeah, like there was a repair on the engine over the weekend. We'll give that bill, and it'll be in August's report, but not three hundred thousand dollars worth. I'm, my projection is ending close to two.
Close to two? What do you say, Lindsay? Okay, I was just curious.
That's my goal anyways.
It's your goal. Okay, that's good. I was just curious where we were, but that's kinda, we've got those numbers are skewed because of other things that are in those budgets, and in those lineups. We've talked about that already, about trying to fix our accounting system where we don't, we only look at what our budget is, and the other things, grant monies and all those float-through monies, and something else so we can know exactly what we're looking at budget-wise. So that's, that's all I have to say about that. Anybody have any other questions or comments about the financial report? Okay. Thank y'all. Uh, we have Mr. Doug Getz here to talk about our swim season this year and swimming pool, and before you do that, I want to pay you a compliment, sir, because I've had numerous people, at least two, no. There's certain people make comments about the pool and how well it was ran, and the thing that went on, and the success, having the pizza, and all the different things. We've talked about that, and I want to thank you personally for the job you did and for making that a success, and less of a headache for City Hall, but I think it's a headache for City Hall.
I wouldn't say that. It's probably still a headache. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Savannah. This is just a brief overview. I'm a numbers guy, so bear with me just a few minutes. It's not gonna take that much time or effort. It's a very positive and uplifting report. But, uh, we just really had a completely successful swim season. I can't even begin to tell you how successful it was. But if you just want to look at attendance for the entire season, we were up five thousand, or we were up nine hundred and seventy-three, or twenty-three percent over twenty twenty-four. We had five thousand one hundred and twenty swimmers. My goal, you know, Leslie thinks I'm crazy because I have goals for the pool. Heaven forbid you have goals and think. I wanted to have, I wanted to do five thousand swimmers this year. Do I have any control over that? None other than my customer support skills. And I'll tell you right now that the people come back because me and my lifeguards, we mission by name, and their kids by name. If they were teachers or preachers or whatever, we spoke to them coming in, and we spoke to them going out. So a lot of that goes a long way towards building a rapport, and the pool is just a vital asset. So let's just jump right in. Not that any of you care. We had zero rain days in twenty twenty-four for a total of fifty swim days. Now, this year, uh, after the mayor came out and observed the pool, we agreed to try to stay open an extra week, so it meant I needed to recruit lifeguards before they went to college and high school. Were able to do that. So in twenty twenty-five, we actually had four rain days. Right before the Fourth of July and the week after, we had just horrible weather. I mean, we had days where we had twelve swimmers, and we had eighteen dollars in sales at the concession stand, and you just look at yourself like, what the heck am I doing here? But anyway, we had fifty-four swim days, and we averaged right at ninety-five swimmers in twenty twenty-five, which is up over twelve from the previous year. May not mean anything to you, but to me, in hand, we're doing something right. We're bringing people out once. So admissions, the pool is not gonna ever probably create a million-dollar profit, to be honest with you, but it did generate fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars in revenue just off of admissions. And by admissions, we mean the people that paid, which would have been four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. That doesn't count the under ones that swim for free and the over sixty-fives that swim for free. And we don't really have a really good grasp yet on how many pool passes we sell and how many that encompasses. But anyway, we have revenue almost of fifteen thousand dollars. It's an increase of twenty-nine percent over twenty twenty-four. It's the largest amount since twenty twenty-one over the year after COVID, so we're doing something right. We're trending upwards. Okay, for the swimming year of, of two thousand five to two thousand seventeen, the pool actually had, um, private parties, which we ceased in two thousand seventeen. And that generated an average of twenty-nine thousand dollars a year in revenue. So this year, if you were to compare that without pool parties, we only did fourteen thousand, and we were down forty-eight percent. So, um, you know, if I'm around for much longer and we still want to do it, we're gonna start doing pool parties again because I think they're the right. We get so many requests for pool parties, just to have birthday parties and things like that. Doesn't mean you have to reserve the pool. It just means we're gonna try to accommodate your party, whether it's ten or forty-five. We had a party this summer that actually had forty-five ten-year-old girls attended, and that meant they spent money at the concession stand too. And we made three dollars per person coming into the door, so it was a great, you know, it was a great day.
Well, let me ask, why we didn't do that this year?
Uh, this was actually my first full year. Last year, I came in two weeks after the season started just because of personnel issues. Uh, this year, I just wanted to, uh, first of all, implement the concession stand, which almost everybody in this room that knows me thought I was crazier than a loon for wanting to run a concession stand. I just didn't want to lose, you know, revenue. I didn't want that eighty-five dollar check from whatever group was gonna pay us their little commission of five percent. I wanted the whole kit and kaboodle. And, uh, you know, we pulled it off somehow. I used to have a full hair. But anyway, uh, the concession stand has never been operated by the City of Eastland staff or anybody within the city until this year. We staffed it with two lifeguards. They were already there. We didn't pull them off their duties on the deck. We actually designated two people every day. Slow days that dropped down to one. Busy Saturdays, we put a third person in there. When you look out of the office from where I would sit, and you'd see thirty people standing in line for pizza, and they only have fifteen minutes to do this once an hour, you've gotta turn people around. I mean, it's a crazy hectic fifteen minutes, to be honest with you. We're just trying to get people in and out the door. So anyway, I personally don't ever see a nonprofit having the opportunity to run the concession stand again, so we can earn a decent five percent. Although the Boy Scouts have already been there scoping out the pool. They think the concession stand is there next year. I'll arm Russell the guy for that, so. Anyway, uh, this year, we generated gross profits of ten thousand seven hundred and three dollars from the concession stand alone. My goal was five thousand, so we blew that within the first three weeks. Until we hit our little lull around July the fifth, it was crazy. Then I came up with this crazy idea to sell dip and dots, which are, you know, they're, our version is called mini melts. They sell for five dollars a cup, two for eight, three for ten. The first week we sold them, our revenue jumped to one thousand seven hundred and five dollars that week. And, uh, the distributor is actually the guy and his wife that own Maze. They'd only been doing it for five days. We sold fifty the first day. They sold five the first week, and we've sold probably close to five hundred. And next year, we'll have two freezers, and we'll sell well over a thousand. And nothing we've ever sold at the concession stand has ever been a loss. Everything's at a profit. Some of our profits are just absurd, you know, absurd.
Maze and Domino's can put in a swimming pool.
Well, I'm telling you, you would have thought of opening a pizza place and just let them swim for free. Because when you walk in with that pizza, you would think we have a little Italian lady behind the building with the brick oven, because people go nuts. Even Savannah says it's different. It's a different pizza than you buy off the street.
Well, I, I.
They put toppings on it.
Are you gonna tell the story about somebody coming up there just to get pizza?
I am, you know.
I won't, I won't bring it up.
There are people that literally come up there and ask you when the next batch of fresh pizza's gonna be there. Um, we'll, we'll correct one of our downsides, which is not taking a credit card or a debit card, because whatever money they have in their pocket, they spend it. And a truth and point, two weeks ago, a lady came in. I didn't even notice how big her party was. She spent eighty-two dollars at the concession stand. She bought, um, gosh, how many pizzas was that a train? She bought whole pizzas. She bought two entire boxes of popsicles, which would have been twenty-four at a dollar a piece. And the only reason she stopped buying is because she only had a hundred-dollar bill, you know. So a credit card, she probably would have spent more than that, to be honest with you. And, uh, like I said, the party that had forty-five little ten-year-old girls, they spent a ton of money. I think they bought six entire pizzas. We buy our pizzas from Domino's. For six dollars and ninety-nine cents, we sell them for two dollars a slice. It's a dollar twelve profit. And why they think it's just the best pizza in the world is beyond me, but it tastes different at the pool when it's a hundred and eighty-three. It just does. And you're hungry. That's exactly it. It's not like you're buying candy or a pickle. You're hungry. That's exactly it. So the total revenue this year, if I had known it was gonna be this close, I'd have bought a popsicle. Twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Revenue and concession stand from admissions and everything. It's just crazy. It really is. Okay, so this actually appears to be probably the one of the most successful years that I know of. I've only been doing this, like I said, this is my first full season. But, uh, it just depends on your support, the support of the mayor, the city commissioners, the manager, the community as a whole. But it's more than just moral support. The swimming pool is now twenty years old, has not seen, uh, really updates or renovations since two thousand nineteen, then this summer. We had to replace some tiles. We did about eight thousand square tile work, and, uh, eventually I'll have pictures of before and after. But in two thousand nineteen, you had like seventy-six thousand dollars worth of repairs, so that was just six years ago. And I don't want the City of Eastland pool to go by the wayside like Ranger and Cisco. I don't want to be talking in five years, what a great pool we used to have. It's time to cut up or shut up now, and it's not moral support. It's financial support. This is an outreach that you cannot imagine. I mean, we have hosted events that you cannot even think about. We hosted the Cisco Summer Girls Athletic Programs. They came over and trained for an hour and swam for an hour. We did that free of charge. We didn't make a single penny on it. It's just the camaraderie and, you know, just the, the rapport you build. Then the, the City of Eastland, the new football coach, and I want to do the same thing. We hosted the entire Eastland Athletic Program from junior high to high school. They came over and swam for two hours and just had a blast. We do senior ladies row. It's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We have the, uh, lap swimmers, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, what else have we done?
City of Eastland had a party there.
City of Eastland, senior class had a party that, well.
Employment.
True. The City of Eastland as a whole had ninety employees that night with family, cooked burgers and hot dogs, swam. It was a fantastic event. But like the, the senior class actually came out, and, uh, we actually had a business rent the pool this year that had bought a pool pass. So my goal is to reach out to other businesses, because if this one business knew that another business had done it, they start competing amongst themselves like, well, you can't have a pool party without me having a pool party. So, you know, when Stanley Ford decides to show up, you're not gonna tell me Lake Full and Water wouldn't want to have a bigger, better pool for him. But anyway, what else have we done?
You taking notes there?
I'm taking notes. Got my cord drawn. And even though we're not reserved for private parties, and I say reserved, meaning they've made, they've made a reservation, we have a big bloop of the, and, uh, usually if somebody will get there early on a Saturday, I'll let them have it. I'll let them decorate, and, uh, we'll really treat them like royalty, to be honest with you. The whole key to this is, if we go back to private parties, is promptly having a lifeguard who's got a real sassy personality and let her be like a host, and that'll be who you talk to when you go to the pool, and they won't have to deal with me or some cranky guy or anyone. We're gonna have somebody there to take care of their every need, you know, whatever they need or whatever they want. But anyway, um, future things we want to have, and this will involve Larry and Savannah, we want to have a polar plunge. And we want you two to go off the slide and celebrate freezing temperatures.
Real life, who works for who here?
I'm just challenging. I don't work for anybody. I mean, I play golf a lot, so.
We're doing that this week or next week?
Uh, it's gonna be the first time we get some really built infractions.
January.
Yeah. You gotta donate a can of goods for the.
We intend to, to do something for like a local food bank. You can go down the slide and see where you can.
That was we can go down?
She's going, she's going too.
I said I would do it.
Well, you just said you can go down the slide. We can go down the slide.
But anyway, that's something we're gonna do. You know, you're more than invited to participate. I'll be doing it as well.
Make sure and put out a, a deal so all the commissioners can be involved.
Absolutely.
That's good. We're gonna mess up.
We're gonna make it a community-wide thing, because the pool's gonna go back to being a community pool. Next year, we're gonna have a, a movie night once a week. Just for kids. We're gonna have an adult swim night with an adult movie, and I don't mean an adult movie. I mean like, y'all, there's something where you don't have to worry about. I've always said, if we have a liquor license, I can make this a million bucks. Pizza and beer, we could have, we'd have a corner on the market. But anyway, we're gonna do the bath, we're gonna do the, uh, movie night, and we're gonna have like a late-night swim and take advantage of our lights. But again, um.
With the movies?
Pardon?
Where are you gonna show the movies?
Uh, we've got a, access to a projector that inflates and a great sound system, and we're gonna do it just on the side of where the chemical building is.
Yeah, cool.
And we're gonna let them either just, you know, swim in the pool, or watch it from the edge of the pool, or, um, you know. But again, it's, it's not just your moral support. We need your financial support. Um, it's much, the repairs are much needed and long overdue. And I really think the public has spoken. We, they, they've asked for repairs, and the pool is in dire need of repairs. You can go out there right now and, uh, find any number of things wrong. We, uh, I'm not gonna say we limped it along, but the tile work we had done truly needed to be done, and it was a perfect job. The guys did a great job, but we need to have a pool company come in and actually give us, you know, whatever, whatever things they can give us. But anyway, um, I want this to be a great twenty twenty-six season that's coming up. You won't be disappointed. Neither will our community. But I even challenge you to visit the pool. It's not too late to actually take a swim. You tell me at night, y'all wanna swim, I'll get two lifeguards out there or whatever it takes. We still have hot weather. If you haven't been to the pool lately, you need to go. So I'll challenge you to visit that. Um, like I said, um, we're looking forward to, uh, making Swim Twenty-Six a complete success. I'll do whatever I can to make you happy. I just need your moral and your financial support. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
The only one that's total flood is that we can not be out of town.
You'll be the first to know.
Thank you for what you're doing. A great report. That's very good.
Thank you.
Can I mention, he started, the pool opened a week after he had a heart attack, like a, a major heart attack.
Yes, he really deserves kudos.
He got out of the hospital on Wednesday and was at the pool on Thursday.
And was supposed to be in the A C.
Worked day on Friday, and the pool opened on Saturday.
Supposed to be in the A C and did not do that one time. I know.
So, kudos to him.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great report.
We'll send our thanks to your, uh, lifeguards as well. They were a great group of kids.
We've had a lot of boating. And next, we get an airport report, but it just is amazing. Bogey Z, all yours, sir.
Thank you. Kudos to you on the pool, because being a Marine, I was flight crew in the Marine Corps. And people don't realize when you're flight crew in the Marine Corps, you get to go swim pool. I had to tread water for an hour, dead in a book, or two hours, but that's in the size of the passage pool. You get your aircrew wings. And if I had a, in my hometown I grew up in, I had a pool that I used to go swim in after I worked out. Had not been to that, would never pass that class. So you might help some young troops someday that pass flight crew because you learn in the pool here. I guess that, that, that's, this flight crew is a pretty hard thing to go through. It's a sheer school and all the stuff I was there. I'm Bodie Z. I run the airport out here for the City of Eastland. Um, how many of you have been to the airport before? Okay. Um, we, we support a lot of different avenues of our, our facility out here. Um, we have one of the finest facilities in the state, I believe. Because we have people flying from all over the state come to us. They're gonna come eat, they come to our restaurants. Uh, for twenty-three years now, we're official base with Forest Service. The National Forest Service counts on us when we're in fire danger to base their fire tankers and air support at our airport to support our local fire departments, our volunteers, and everything to support air support. And, uh, we're the one, one of the few that will, to open the door. We just open the door and say, hey, here you are. We don't know rules other than help us save our homes and save our facilities. And not a lot of the, the aircraft, I took away some pictures here. Here's some of the aircraft that have been at our facility during fire season. That's an Old Navy Sea King for firefighting, but they use it for fire tankers. Um, how many of you watched, uh, the, the fire bombers versus the air tractors on boats? Uh, Randy Bex, he tracked it from Gorlin, from Lake Leon to Gorlin back. It was nine minutes, three of them. And they, they have gone three hours to help save the town and help, you know, we lost Harbin, but we saved, we saved Gorlin. We saved a lot during that time. Let's see here. I have some other pictures here. Um, I brought some. Here's a little bit of the history of our, our facility through the years. If you look right here, this is how it started back in the seventies. Uh, with their field that was there, the hangar, all the hangars and everything is along this line right now. This is where the old hangar was in the old days, and we've improved through the years. Um, I moved here in ninety-two. I worked for Joe Beatty. He had a pipeline patrol, and, uh, I took over when he passed away. But these are some of the pictures we've had since we've updated our facility through the years. This is the latest update, the support for air support and, uh, aircraft on our field. And we have anything from Citation Tens, uh, corporate airplanes, helicopters. Uh, this is what the original, original, uh, the terminal building, little difference between there and now. A little bit, a little bit better. And, uh, here's a picture, here's a picture of the old days. I have, I found these, uh, old pictures I found in the old facility, but, um. Here's some pictures of some of the aircraft that have been in our facility through the years. How many members scheming Mimi from TV show Riptide, when it landed to our facility a couple, little while back? Um, this is, uh, this airplane right here belongs to Road Ranger Truck Stops. They use our facility to do their truck stop over in Sisto. Their pilots are friends of ours, and they, they use our facility when they come to town. Uh, this, this airplane right here, uh, is a medevac that was, uh, Sean Mosher's wife that hurt real bad in, at Greenland. Uh, flipped to Snowville and broke her hip. They hauled a doctor into, uh, Ricky Nick Iceland, uh, fixed her hip enough where she could get back, get, get home. This Lear flew here from Iceland, the Bangor Bay for a quick field to Eastland in a matter of, a matter of about eight hours. So we're an international medevac airport. But anyway, she's doing better. I'd say she's doing better, but that's a cool thing there, so. Here's some, uh, um, uh, Customs Border Patrol helicopters come to our facility. There's some, uh, these airplanes right here belong to some neurosurgeons living in Zollis, Louisiana. Their big, the big thing they love to come to our town for, bird hunting. They come in the fall, and they come here. They're our biggest clients for bird hunting. And, uh, that's, they come in here every year, but they, they come here, they're, they're neurosurgeons. I mean, they're brain, if they come, when they're hunting, they're like Duck Dynasty on, uh, on Meg. They're pretty cool people. Very nice people. And then we also have the, uh, being a Marine, my brothers come in. We have Marine Cobras and Hues come in quite often. We have Marine Cobras and Hues come in quite often. Out of New River going to Yuma and they found our airport and they know I can take care of them, they'll come in and out. Uh, about, about, about every two months, I have a couple of Cobras and Hues come in for people.
I'm getting the Apaches.
Yeah, I got, I've got, I got pictures of that. Let's see here, I got, I got some pictures of the Apaches here. Uh, the Apache gunships come in also. And, uh, let's see here. Now here's the Marine 53s, the big dolly greens come in. That day I had seven thousand gallons of jet. When they left, I was empty. Two aircraft. Empty as hell. And that was pretty cool. Now here's the Shucks, the Shucks come in from the, from the base over at Grand Prairie, the Army Shucks Reserve Union.
I can see it over here.
It's already dropped out there. And here's one of the 61s of the, the firefighting aircraft boats. Let's see here, I have a husband and mother here. This aircraft's kind of cool, if you heard some flying. This airplane about a month ago was just restored. This fuselage was at the Battle of, uh, Coral Sea and the Battle of Okinawa, the fuselage was just restored to Ezeals. The pilot, one of the most fat in the world, gave us a flyby for the other morning. If you heard a Hellcat flying around for about an hour, he gave us an airshow over our airport. And this airplane, the pilot, the guy that flew this in that battle was 105, he, last year he was at Ezeals, he signed the fuselage and he was the one that flew it. But, uh, pretty cool. So some of the, some of the unique things that happened at our little airport. And, uh, let's see here.
Anybody else that works out there other than you?
I, I employ, I've employed a lot of small high school kids. Uh, Ramiro Zamora has worked for me. Uh, he's in, he's working at Rain Aircraft in Waco now. Uh, Jason Zamora, his brother, worked for me for a little while, he's going to TCC to become a decent mechanic. But he likes, he started working on airplanes with me. Um, last, my last young kid I have is Chris O'Hara. He's playing, he's playing football and, uh, so he, he works for me during the summertime. So I employ a lot of high school kids to help, uh, to help get them started in a positive way to be productive in life. I think, I think they learn a lot and I think they like airplanes inside. Right here is a 1923 Traveller. These guys came from Oshkosh, came down through here, it's over by Ranger, but they stayed at our facility, stayed at our town for a couple of days before they went home to California. Here's one of the, this is one of the guys that comes in and goes, uh, goes hunting over at the, the, uh, elk, the castle ranch over by, by Ranger Hill. And they come in here like, and planes like this is a Citation Ten, this is the fastest production jet in, in the country. And, uh, they come in here quite often to our facility because we support them with the, uh, what they want for their enjoyment. Here's another picture of those Travellers in front of our terminal building. And those are 1923 aircraft and they just came from Oshkosh to the airshow in Wisconsin. Here's a picture of, this is a, oh, L-19 Bird Dog, it's a warbird. Robert Joe Jackson owns this little plane. His dad flew one just like this at D-Day when USS Texas floated its ballast tanks so the rounds could inland to get the Germans. His dad was flying one just like that. And he just based our airport. And Robert Joe Jackson had that restored and his dad's on, what his dad did during World War II. Here's another picture of the Marine 53s, how big they are on our ramp. They're huge. A picture of a Shuck by our facility right in front of our terminal building.
That is a big one.
Oh yeah, they're, they're pretty, pretty neat. And really, you know, wake up, woke up April 3rd at 5:30 in the morning, we saw what happened. And when they said it's straight line winds, well, we, it was an actual tornado. Because there's no way that could have been just straight line winds. But we lost five airplanes and, uh, three hangars during that, a lot of damage at our field. But the, the neat thing about that morning was, as bad as it was, when it touched down, people realized at 5:30 in the morning, how many kids would have been busted up? The God miracle was that no one got hurt. We lost lots of equipment and stuff, but we lost lots of stuff, but no one, no one got hurt. That was the A man miracle for them. But, uh, we had, uh, because this air, this hangar, I bought from Bill Hoffman and it was over in this side of the facility. And it got tumbled in the vents on the other side of the deal. Uh, the, um, this is a detailed bonanza. It was flipped like a soccer ball across the ramp and into the, on the deal. The main thing about that was we had about 30 people, volunteers, just show up to help out on Friday. This happened Thursday morning, Friday. The whole ramp was full of people helping, like fire ants, helping clean up. And then jumped and helped out, it was pretty cool. So we had a lot of different people, a lot of different avenues, but it was pretty neat how people volunteered our airport community, jumped and helped. So we can get our airport back in operation. Because I had to go to enclosed, notice the airman, it was something I'm required to do. So if our airport's not safe to land, I'll, I'll let the FAA know, hey, we were cleaning up, we had a problem. By Sunday morning, I, I was able to reopen the airport. It was, it was pretty cool. But this is, uh, if you look right here, this is where I grew up to, this is, uh, Eva Irons' jet, this is their hangar. The tornado actually sucked the skin right off it. But the miracle was, if you were saying, this is my shop right next door, and if you look right there, the, my shop was barely damaged. And I had an 80-year-old, one of three flyable in the world twin-engine airplane in my hangar, I'm jacked, and it was not touched. I could have lost it all, but it did, it was one of those things. Winds and weather, uh, you don't, can't predict them. But that's some of the pictures of the, of the damage that was happening April 3rd. So we're, we're in cleanup now. As of right now, the contractor, um, has finished rebuilding the carport, which is, uh, let's see, where is that? Just have the carport, I have a picture of it. Right here, the carport's right here, this small, this has been rebuilt. And the contract should be here next week to start rebuilding the hangar here on the end to rebuild this. And, uh, um, that same contractor is, uh, going to rebuild the hangar where Eva Irons' hangar was. And that hangar's going to be, uh, a third bigger than what originally was beginning was. So it'll be good for our, for our community and things like that, so. Any questions about the airport, anything like that? Any have, any, any questions about what goes on out there other than that? We have an EA chapter, uh, 956, which is our experimental recap chapter. We're having a Young Eagles event on the 25th of October, uh, where young kids can come out and get their first flight ever. Volunteer pilots that are certified with the EA and go through safety credentials, but we'll give the kids, anyone that's never been on a flight can get their first flight. Will be there at eight o'clock in the morning till 11, so, uh, kids come out. And I'm going to have some other pilots there to answer questions, some local kids that have grown, become pilots. Uh, Merrick Brooks, uh, Walker Brooks' son, learned to fly out here at the airport, running, riding bulls. And now he's, uh, one of the most advanced pilots in, in the country. Um, and then, uh, and then we're, uh, we have a bunch of other pilots going to come over, uh, kind of talk about airplanes and get interest in aviation. Because aviation is a, a very neat business to be in. Uh, mechanicking, piloting, different avenues. Um, I got my start in Marine Corps, but a lot of people can start in different directions. It's, it's wide open. It's only 100 years old, it's still growing. And we, we have so much to grow with aviation. And our town is part of that. And our airport's part of that, it's pretty neat.
You like that, huh? Thank you, go ahead.
I have kind of probably a dumb question, but it little, shows how little I know. Are all the flights that come in daily, are, are those scheduled in other words, do you know? Or is, are they, just some of them land when no one's at the airport?
Our airport's a general aviation airport and, uh, so they can come and go as a C-5. Um, we have a lot of school traffic from Weatherford, Granbury, places like that, uses this as a cross-country location. Is to go across country, you fly for the 50 miles, for the logbook. So a lot of people come in like that, we have a lot of medevacs during, during the COVID, COVID years. I was out there three times a night with canors, people went out and get medevacs out here to save lives. And I was getting called all the time, get, for the medevac people, so, you know, get people where they need to be going to get the care they need.
Shirley's question, does someone need to come here to get fuel? Do you have to be on site to give them fuel?
No, we have a self-service system, but, uh, but for certain types of, like jet fuel, things like that, I need to be there. But I, when I'm not able to be there, I have people that help me fill in for me. So when I can't be there, I have something show up, always make sure that it's accounted for. Like we had the wreck we talked about, the power went out. I issued an order real quick to make sure, uh, just the power was out at the airport. So I issued an order, I issued a quick note of that we didn't have power. So people didn't land expecting fuel and we couldn't get anything. And then once we got the power back up, then I counseled it, took care of it. But most times the people come, uh, like we have a lot of pipeline patrol, the oil field, the power line, things like that. We have a lot of helicopters that do the, the power lines, like little birds, like you see the little, uh, uh, like the PI helicopters. They use that style helicopter to do the power lines. And they'll hover right next to the power line where there's some live and they'll change insulators out. Where it's hovering right there, oh, we were watching, it's pretty amazing watching plots. But they use our airport because of our hotels and the things that we offer here, that they come to us because they know they get, uh, they can do their job and come and go. And it really helps our town because it helps because they stay, you know, they'll have crews, up to three or four crews in hotel rooms and go to Walmart, wherever else, to swim money in our town because of our airport. Turns over.
You had mentioned a while back that, uh, because Charleston was moving up in the NCAA.
Yes.
That we might get some traffic off of that?
We, we will, we will.
We will?
We will, yeah.
And that's basically because of the length of their runway?
Yes, they're, they're lengthening their runway down Steeveville, but ours is longer than theirs right now. So we, we, we get some, we get some clientele now, we already still do. Because enterprises, they come over here to our airport already and, uh, enterprises from Steeveville's brought a car so they can drive back there to talk. Because the length of runway, uh, runway length they have to have to, they'll land and take off, especially as hot as this density altitude. You know, the wing, wings don't fly unless it's cooler air under the wing, so we need longer runway. Because we have 5,000 foot runway at our, our airfield. It's perfect for what we do.
Good.
Well, you talk about all the planes and the people that come here, you make that happen just because of you and you being here, your hospitality and your skills.
Our airport's open over to our town and that's why I'm trying to represent it the best I can.
Thank you for what you do.
And if you, I want your kids to come, come out the 25th of October and see what we have going on. Any other questions?
No, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Fantastic job.
Okay, Board of City Commission, we're discussing action on the following items. Item number one, discussion consideration for resolution 2025-12, a resolution of the City Commission and the City of Eastland, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between Atmos, the City's steering committee and the Atmos Energy Court in Texas. The name of this is Molly Turk, and I'm not sure what part of this she wants to be part of, but go ahead. Chief of Atmos Energy.
Yes. Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. I'm Molly Turk. I am the manager of public affairs for Atmos Energy. I'm here this evening on behalf of Atmos, Atmos Energy, asking the council to pass the resolution approving new rates based on the rate review mechanism. As you may recall, the city approved the rate review mechanism tariff in the spring of 2018. The RRM allows us to adjust our rates on an annual basis to recover the investment made in our gas delivery system. Based on the agreement, Atmos Energy filed to increase our rates per the RRM in April. The initial filing would have increased the average residential customer bill by $9.34 per month. And the average cus, uh, commercial customers bill by $30.70 per month. Following the filing, we negotiated with the ACSC coalition to finalize our rate. Together with the coalition, they agreed upon a rate structure that will increase the average residential customers bill by about $7.28 per month. And the average commercial customers bill by $29.33 per month. The ACSC coalition, which the city is a part of, has recommended that the city approve this item. At this time, be happy to answer your questions if you have any adjustmentability.
Well, Larry, we, this is a deal we pay to be a part of and, and they've stated approve it and get out of the way, so. That's basically what they're telling us, so I'm assuming that's what we need to do.
I'm making a motion to approve resolution 2025-12, um, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Court, Ms. Jakes.
Motion from Shirley to approve resolution 2025-12 and a second from Richard. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Molly, thank you for being here.
Thank you all so much and thank you for a wonderful partnership. We love being a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number two, discussion consideration for resolution 2025-13, a resolution of the City of East, uh, City Commission of the City of East in Texas, authorize the chief of police to enter into a multi-use agreement with Texas Department of Transportation allowing installation operation of automated license plate recognition cameras and Texas Department of Transportation right-of-way and providing an effective date. Chief?
This is the program Flock that we've been talking about. This is just another step and what you already approved to get these cameras started, get them in place. We have to have agreement with Tech Dot to, uh, to put these cameras in their right-of-ways. Uh, so this is the next step in that.
We already talked about.
Eight licensed flight readers and nine cameras.
Eight, no, nine cameras, eight licensed flight readers. Licensed flight readers will be out at the interstate, often on the interstate, and the cameras are all over town. You could have strategic. No, they'll be fixed where they're at.
Do you know how many?
This is Scott's, this is Scott's baby, so, um.
Scott should be behind the podium. The podium.
Go ahead.
Well, this is Scott's baby, he kind of started this. It's a great program. This is the Flock program that Weatherford's got, Abilene's got, Steeveville's got and Brownwood, so we're, we're the link in that. So, uh, this is the program to where, you know, a child molester or anything else comes off that interstate, it's going to, it's going to note it immediately and notify us, uh, missing children, uh, wanted subjects, all that kind of stuff, stolen vehicles. And then the cameras strategically placed around town are going to just, uh, I was talking to the detective from Parker County and they said they're property crimes. They just, they cut them way, way down because you're not going to be able to get there east without being on one of our cameras somewhere. So this is a great program and it's something y'all already, y'all already looked at. This is just the next step in getting that done. I have to do any grateful text off to put them in their right-of-ways.
And Tech Dot's all about it, I'm sure.
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve resolution, uh, 2025-13, authorize the chief of police to enter into multiple use agreement with Tech Dot, allowing the installation operation of automated license plate recognition cameras in Texas Department of Transportation right-of-way.
Motion from Tom to approve resolution 2025-13.
I'll say it.
A second from Richard, any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item number three, discussion consideration to approve Eastern Historic Resolution Board pending remaining of their 2025 grant funding. Am I missing a page on the front of this place? It starts with number two and I didn't know what.
No, this is from the historic board where they approved, using.
That's just their part of the.
Yes.
That's what they did.
Correct, and so now they're coming to you to approve the six additional trash cans to be placed around the square. And the image is attached to it.
As usual, I have a question. Uh, do we maintain these?
We do, the city does.
The city does?
Yes.
They empty the trash out of there?
Yes. I think this kind of goes along with some of the beautification that we've talked about and trying to give, you know, a place, if they will utilize it. Um, it allows them, you know, maybe a few less feet that they have to walk or something in the trash.
Good.
I'm, I make a motion to, for approval, I make a motion to. I make a motion to, to, for approval, I make a motion to approve the expenditure remaining of the remaining of the two thousand twenty five Eastland Historic Preservation Grant. It funds about three thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents for the purchase of six additional waste receptibles.
I'll second.
A motion from Richard, a second from Tom to approve the Historic Board spending the rest of their money. Uh, they want to make a note that they're still gonna have two hundred dollars. They didn't spend all their money there, right?
Correct.
Well, I mean, it says.
Yeah, they have three thousand nine hundred sixty-five left.
Right, okay.
So they want to allocate.
Put that towards the pool park.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number four, discussion and consideration to approve twenty twenty six Eastland Historic Preservation Board application in the Eastland Centennial Library. Who's doing now?
Um, I will carry down today, so I apologize, sorry. And this is, the first page is the minutes that were discussed. The Historic Board approved, um, for this, for both of these items, the library. The packet behind the second page has all the information of what they're utilizing those funds for. And the total portion of the project's eighteen thousand dollars, um, so it's technically, they need an additional four thousand nine hundred dollars. But we have put in our budget to utilize our hotel motel for the special projects to fund this completely. So it will give them ADA compliant sidewalks, um, to the library, which they currently do not have. So they'll remove an old sidewalk, remove old sidewalk, replace it with a sidewalk that needs the sex. And it'll be a huge improvement to that area because there have been several complaints about not being able to get into the library if you, you know, have a wheelchair or something of that nature.
And the grant is twenty-two nine hundred?
Eighteen.
Eighteen nine. And then you're gonna run the rest of it down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then that's for the the sixteen, eighteen nine is for the Community Foundation and sixteen one is for the Centennial Library. But they're utilizing all of their funds that we give them every year, you know, annually for the grants. They're spending it all on these two projects.
Okay. entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty six Eastland Historic Preservation Board Grant application from the Eastland Centennial Library.
I'll second.
A second, a motion from Michael J. and a second from Tom to approve the Eastland Centennial Grant. Any other discussion?
Do you want to note how much it is?
I'm sure.
Yeah, I would say.
Which was a twenty-two?
No, it's eighteen nine and then the sixteen one, is that, that's?
It's on the, it's on the next.
Is it the next item?
Hang on a second. Go back to your first page. The sixteen one is for the library. Eighteen nine is for this next item. This is just on the there minutes, the Historic Board's minutes. So it's sixteen thousand one hundred is the, the amount for the library.
For the library.
Correct.
You got that?
So add that to the.
That's what's in here, but that's what's confusing, by the way. You got that? So Michael J.'s motion is gonna add that sixteen thousand one hundred, your motion is. And a second by Tom. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number five, discussion and consideration to approve twenty twenty six, uh, Eastern Historic Preservation Board Grant Application of the East Community Foundation.
Okay, so the Community Foundation has requested eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And they are going to repair some of the window decor on the balconies, some of the cracks that need to be sealed on the, the conelly. And any of the, if anything needs to be removed for safety purposes, they're gonna do that while they're there. And this is the same company that, uh, did the work on the courthouse, the restoration work at the courthouse.
So what's the total of eighteen nine?
Yeah.
What we're funding is eighteen nine, yes.
Okay, that makes more sense because I'm trying to figure where the four nine was.
Yes.
Okay. Or the four.
Yes. So this one's eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And this comes out of the Historic Preservation Grant, they do.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty six Eastland Historic Preservation Board Grant Application from the Eastland Community Foundation in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
A motion from Tom and a second from Michael J. to approve the twenty twenty six Eastland Historic Preservation Board Grant Application of the Eastland Community Foundation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number five, six, discussion and consideration of appointing Jill Warren as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Commissioners, uh, with the, uh, last BOE, uh, before this, this month, this past month, we had moved Norm Owen and Nikki Armstrong up to, uh, full members. So that, that just was no alternates and so, uh, Jill Warren was willing to step up and become an alternate for that board. She already serves on the Planning and Zoning Board. And so she's been, and she's been great on that board, been a very, uh, good asset and, uh, Board of Adjustment. Feels like she'd be a good person to have, uh, as an alternate if needed.
Is she gonna be the one that serves on both boards?
We have, we have, uh, due to a lack of interest in the boards, we have quite a few that serve on both.
I do.
Yes, sir.
I know y'all tried to have one, but we've got several now. Okay. You entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jill Warren as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Second, then.
Motion from Shirley and a second from Richard to appoint Jill Warren as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number seven, discussion and consideration of appointing James Doyle as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Same thing?
Same thing, you know, it's a, we decided to give a chance on a guy that nobody really knows around here. James is great, we, we, he's, he is great. Every time he's, I've been asked to serve on the board, P and Z. I think he's served on Historical, or no, uh, EDI, he's served as Commissioner. I mean, he's, he, he's, he very much knows what he's doing and he's also said that he's willing to step up and be an alternate if needed on, on BOA as well and the Board of Adjustment thought he'd be great.
You entertain a motion?
I move that we, uh, appoint James Doyle as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second that.
Motion from Richard and a second from Michael J. to appoint James Doyle as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number eight, discussion and consideration of appointing Tammy Archer as a municipal court judge.
In this, um, agenda item, you have the agreement that's been standard. The only thing that changed is under section two, um, at the request of Tammy Archer. She requested the hours per monthly go from eight to twelve. And so for the compensation listed as two fifty a month. Um, she has said that she will be, um, as standard, she'll ha, she'll be here for a minimum of eight. And those extra four will be if she needs to go to the jail or do juvenile, so it increases that by four hours. And she's here tonight, um, Tammy. I don't know if any of y'all have ever met her.
No.
If you have any questions or anything about her.
Tammy currently serves as a.
Associate.
Associate judge right now.
Correct.
Thank you for being here. Don't care who you are. All right, we need a motion to appoint Tammy Archer as a municipal court judge.
I move that we appoint Tammy Archer as a municipal court judge for the city.
I'll second.
Motion by Richard and a second by Tom to appoint Tammy S. Archer as municipal court judge. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Number nine, discussion and consideration to approve the purchase of a wood chipper with a wildfire bidding litigation grant.
Okay, so when we approved, if y'all recall, when we approved our bids, this is one of the things that I requested it to be, uh, declined because it went over budget. Our budget for this is sixty thousand dollars by the grant, sixty thousand dollars. Uh, this has to be approved by commission since it's over fifty thousand dollars and it's satisfying bidding requirements. This is the same company that gave us the price of the first one that was over budget. But we went and scaled it back and this is a diesel wood chipper. Bobby is satisfied that it will meet the needs of the grant. And this is my request to have commission approve this wood chipper. And the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents, which will be funded by the grant.
You entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Premier to purchase the wood chipper for fifty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents as a wildfire mitigation grant.
A motion from Tom and a second from Richard to approve the wood chipper for fifty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents to be purchased with wildfire litigation grant funds. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number ten, discussion and consideration of approving open bank account where consolidated funds will be deposited.
So what this is, is House Bill nineteen fifty changed, uh, court technology and court security funds. The legislation now allows municipality with a population of less than a hundred thousand dollars to, instead of having separate funds, you can now have one fund and they can be used for the purpose of court security and court technology. So that allows us one less bank account to have to, you know, reconcile individually. It's all in one. I don't know if Leslie had any other.
The way that it's worded though, is starting on May, whatever, anything we've collect, collected after this goes into this consolidated bank account. The money that we had collected prior to that, we have to leave in the old bank accounts to be spent as was specified.
At that time.
At that time.
But going forward, we can combine.
You just answered my question because I was gonna ask where we've been putting that money at this time.
We have two bank accounts.
But you have to keep those accounts until that money is spent and they can go away. And now this is a new account under the new law of urban money.
Yes.
Okay, because I was gonna ask, what do we have? Why don't we need a new bank account? Just rename this one something.
That account wasn't.
You answered that question.
Two separate ones.
Okay. You stand up.
Make a motion to approve opening a bank account where consolidated funds will be deposited, uh, coming from the municipal court. Account will be entitled Uni-Torch C D S T account.
I'll second that.
A motion from Shirley and a second from Michael J. Will that be the name of the account?
Yes, that means Uni-Torch Consolidated Building Security slash Technology.
Okay. Making that part of the motion, I was making sure that is gonna be the name.
Yes, that is gonna be the name of the account.
You got the motion from Shirley and a second from Michael J. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. City manager briefing.
Mayor Commission, um, we'll start with the roads, the street improvements, that is all still continuing. Um, we're, they're still not completed, the Pogue and Terry Street intersection, North State Street. We're looking at possibly identify, um, identifying a way to widen that. It's a little narrow. Um, so we're looking for funds within the budget to see if we can, of the grant, within the budget of the grant, to see if we can utilize those there or not. Weaver Street is still, needs to be poured. Virginia Street and Lago Vista is the same. Lago Vista will be the very last one to be poured, um, as we're waiting on water line, the pump line to be installed.
How is that going?
It's going good. The contractor, uh, they're working other jobs too, so their crews are kind of here and then not. Um, they've installed the line in front of the Vega Vet and across Pogue and they're now moving west toward Lago Vista. They were here last week, but I believe this week they're not here.
Are they aware we're kind of on a time crunch here?
And they are working together, these two people.
But so we're okay?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. That's why the streets have kind of slowed down some too. They were moving, they were walking along really fast, getting completed and now we've slowed down on both of those, on the streets because they're working together. They're trying to allow the water line to catch up.
Okay.
And when they come into town, my understanding is they want to be able to pour the roads and not just do a little bit here and there. Sidewalk, there's no update. Um, we were told for the repairs by Tech Dot for August to start. I have not seen that yet. Um, it's still August, so there's still time, so that will be a better update in September. Fire chief position, we interviewed four applicants and offer's been made. I'm still awaiting a response. Hopefully by tomorrow I will have a response. Um, the firehouse remodel, he's expected to start Wednesday and that will be underway. Beautification plan, I'm currently going through an outline to prepare that for y'all. I'm hoping to have that presented in September. And then, um, just our work on streets, our emulsion truck is near completion. We anticipate to begin chip sealing areas this month. The street department, um, their crews utilized the Durapatcher with the emulsion that we ordered last month and they repaired potholes in the four hundred to five hundred blocks of Sedosa, blocks of East Foch, East Pershing, East Connor, South Marsh, South Browder. There's, or Browder, sorry. There's, um, several areas that are not listed on here that they've done. But this section was one of one that specifically was worked on as soon as the Durapatcher was started.
Okay.
Are there any questions with that?
I appreciate you, uh, going, moving forward with the beautification plan.
Any, can I talk for sure? All right, code compliance.
Commissioner Terry opened up July with seventy-eight cases. He opened twenty-six new cases, closed forty-seven. And on his report, it said ninety, but that math doesn't math. The actual ending amount of cases was fifty-seven. Terry had to go back and redo the report. Uh, we realized there was some stuff in error and I guess we didn't get that fixed in time. Uh, out of all those, he had forty violations for those open cases, had sixty-three violations out of the ones that were closed. Three junk vehicles. We had eight citations issued, um, twenty-six annual notices, had three thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars of fines that were assessed. We did have five thousand two hundred twenty-nine fines paid. That is, uh, Mr. Polito with, uh, property that was on West Commerce. Uh, if you remember, his, um, his, uh, fines were at ten thousand five hundred and some change. So he's paid about half of that off already. Had four cases, uh, that were abated by the city. We had to send the mowers out. Leans were placed on those properties. Uh, amount of the, the abatement was nine hundred dollars. We had, uh, one lien filed, um, in the month of, uh, July. That's for four hundred twenty-five dollars. The leans for the others will be probably in the next month's, um, uh, report.
They, that's because they have thirty days to pay.
To pay, to pay for it before the leans are placed. In addition to this report, uh, Terry has pruned out the cases closed. So those are the forty-seven cases that were closed. We're trying to get you a, um, report for the open cases. We noticed that when he was pulling up the open cases, it kept pulling up only twelve. And after doing some research, we found out that's because out of the forty-seven that were closed, the fourteen that were missing were closed. And so that's why they weren't showing up in the open report. Those are showing ones that were still, still open. So we want to make sure if we can find in that, uh, the report section of Comcast, how to get it to actually show the ones that were open, uh, whether they're closed or not. So we're still working on that.
When, when you say these are closed, they are resolved?
They were resolved cases, yes, sir. So either they mowed, they picked up the trash, they moved the vehicle, just depend, uh, you know, if they were living without water, they got water activated. It's just depending on whatever the case was.
The bottom one, the second one, the bottom one says fourth. Bottom one, the second one, the bottom says fourth.
Is that one we mowed?
That's probably one that we mowed, yes, sir.
We, we mowed it.
Yes, sir, that would be probably that one abatement from that we were, we installed.
Yes.
Voluntary maintenance.
They did themselves.
Okay.
And then Maverick Expansion is, is moving along. They've got the first building concrete poured. We inspected the lines for water and sewer out there and for the new structure. New fire hydrant was placed out there for their expansion. They were required to install one to make sure we could get the area covered for, for the fire code. So that's installed out there.
Where is that?
Maverick Town Home, those apartments that are new out there, Lago Vista. They're expanding out to the south, where the area that they recently annexed in. And then I wanna brag on Bodie also. I came from Mineral Wells to the municipal airport out there. You know, you go to that one and you come here and see what Bodie's taking care of. He does a good job with basically him being the only person out there for all intensive purposes. It's always squared away, it's in great shape out there, it's always clean. You know, it's, it's like you're walking into a new building every time you walk out there. And he's been real good to work with as far as repairs for the insurance, Bodie's staying on top of everything. Before I have a question to ask him, he's showing up with the answer. So I just wanna brag on him, I don't get to see him a whole lot at meetings. And so he's, he really is an asset to, it's not just at the airport, but just for Eastland overall.
Yeah, Bodie, thank you, what else?
That's it for me unless you guys have a question.
Do I have any questions for Tom? All right.
Labor on the court. There you go.
On the police department side of things, in July, the police department responded three hundred fifty-seven calls for service. We made twenty-one arrests, fifty-three case reports were generated. We had thirty-two agency assists, eight hundred and thirty-three business checks were done. There were ten traffic crashes, ten domestic disturbances. Seventeen cases were filed with the district attorney's office, one juvenile case, and we did nine open record requests. On the traffic side of things, we wrote a hundred and three citations, two hundred and ninety-seven warnings for four hundred contacts. I know that's down, but we're also down on officers right now, we're training too. Have one on the sick list, so we get those guys back up, that will self-correct back up to the numbers that we like to see. On the animal control side of things, we had two hundred calls for service, two citations were issued, three warnings. We did sixteen impounds, nine animals were adopted out, zero were quarantined this time. We had six narcotics arrest cases made, one DWI, five other arrests, and nine warrants were served. We had one large narcotics arrest resulting in a manufacturing delivery charge and also resulted in us seizing the suspect's vehicle through the court.
Is it Cadillac? Time before, we got one time before.
That's where we're at on the police department as well.
Can you use that vehicle for a police car now?
It's still on pickups still. It's not a police super, with ice on it and stuff. I'll fix it up for you, buddy. I bet we can find a good, good use for it. I'm not, what is it, a teletubby, a Camry or something?
Prius.
Prius.
Oh, yeah, we, see you drop that.
Maybe Scottsdale.
Good chief car, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I pursuit, you can have a command presence when you pull up a Prius.
The one that was seized in the past, you know, if you ever heard that, we took it to the, to Abilene to a meeting one time. You were with us when. That Cadillac and everybody.
Spinner. City hall needs a good vehicle.
On the animal control side, that's really jumped up. I mean, it just, the last three months, May, June, and now July, what's calling that?
Is that because of what, chickens? You know, we get a lot of chicken calls now. I think, I think having two of them out there, you know, we've got the part-time one, she's working, she's working, they're both working hard. So I think it's helped. And we're at, we're covering seven days a week now.
I've seen one weekends, that's good. Yeah, my neighborhood, trying to find raccoons.
Yeah, hope raccoons, chickens, we do it all.
Do it all. Okay.
Even bring a sniper to, we're out there now, scare their chief.
All right, that's all on the police department side, any questions for Chief Pitt? Fire department side?
On the fire department side, let's see. We had forty-six assists with EMS, which is always really how we assist EMS a lot. They had two vehicle crashes in July, and again, keep in mind this is July, August has hit us hard, with injuries, four non-injuries. Seventy, seventy-three different calls for service or different type of things they did. So the guys have been really good. I was gonna give the commission just a little bit of update on where we're at and what we've been doing. When I got there, of course, I asked for mission critical things and officer safety things. And these are the things that we've corrected since I got in there. We've spent almost ten thousand dollars putting tires on units that were just, the tires need to be replaced. We spent another hundred and forty-nine dollars on four-clip cage, safety issue. We had four vehicles that were ten thousand miles past oil changes, so that's almost another eight hundred dollars worth of oil changes we've done. They needed a washer and dryer, the washer and dryer was, part of that was out, so we got them new washer and dryers. Building stuff is supposed to start Wednesday, as Savannah said. We're excited about that, we're gonna get that back up and running and where it should be. That's another thirty-eight thousand dollars there. Twenty-three thousand dollar, or twenty-three, twenty-three hundred dollars in rental costs, and we've got the guys out of the building right now, staying in RV. We had to replace a front cannon, water cannon on one of our tankers, that was twenty-one hundred dollars. We had eleven thousand dollars, and we actually cut that down, the bill when I got it back on the ladder truck was fourteen or fifteen thousand. And I was able to talk to a couple of other fire chiefs and cut out some of that and do some of that ourselves. But that's, that's eleven thousand dollars there. Well, all together, we've spent right at sixty-eight grand getting the fire department back up where it needs to be in safety issues to get the fire department up and running. Engine six went down, we have not got that bill yet, but it is back up and running and back in service. We'd like to, you know, go a shout out to G K B, they allowed us, they brought a big tanker up, so that allowed us to have extra water in case we had a fire service in Port Cisco. All the surrounding fire departments are always great to help us out. Ladder six is still out right now, getting all the things inspected back up to date, so we're getting that done, we're excited about that. Like Savannah said, made an offer to a fire chief, we're excited about that. We had fourteen applications for that, four of them were really outstanding. And we had a couple that we, it was a really hard choice, there were some, some great applicants in that. So we're excited about a new guy coming in and helping us get this thing go in the direction it needs to go. We're also excited about our dinner tomorrow night, I don't want you guys to forget, we want all y'all there 'cause we wanna introduce y'all, everybody, and, you know, just have an open core and top deal where the guys can see y'all, y'all can put faces with names. We've got a really great thing going over there right now, and we wanna keep that going. We've added six new volunteers, we're looking at a couple more. So I really think transparency is a big thing that our fire department was lacking. And we have changed that, and I think we're gonna have a great foundation for our new fire chief coming in to build on that. And part of that's gonna be keeping y'all involved in that also and making sure that everybody gets along. County judge is gonna be there, sheriff's gonna be there. We're gonna have all of the heads of agencies that we can get there to show our appreciation of him. And we may make this an annual thing if the new fire chief wants to do it. We're excited about that, so we really want, and they, they feed good. Don't say that about firemen, the police officer culture. Firemen eat good. Show up, it's gonna be.
Some donuts versus barbecue, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying those boys know how to eat.
What time and where and all that good stuff?
Six o'clock, is that right, six o'clock?
Six, six-thirty.
So it's their regular business, it's a regular meeting, they're gonna have their regular meeting, but they're gonna feed everybody first and we're gonna introduce everybody. And I'm gonna go through a short spiel on, you know, the county judge's role and your role and commission's role and all the different things that some of our new volunteers mount up.
Ladder six is where?
It is in Crum.
Crum.
I'm assuming it's where they bought the thing or where we got it from.
I don't know if that's still on, fireworks ought to be fixed somewhere now.
Yes, unless it's in, like, E, E six, we had to have it fixed here, down here, but there's places that specialize. And this equipment is, nothing's cheap and nothing's easy.
I have six-thirty wrote down for tomorrow.
So that's probably, I have to go back. Six, you're there early, we'll feed you more.
Part of the dessert. Anything else for Chief Pitt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Appreciate it. What's next?
Yes, what question?
Budget workshop number two.
Do you have any questions on municipal court?
On what?
Municipal court.
Oh, sorry. Municipal court, any questions on municipal court? That is my favorite little line. Really? Okay.
Okay, a lot more there. It's all there, is it?
Well, it's, it used to say Seater Estate or something, whole thing.
Seater Estate, yeah.
Y'all have to fix that, fill the numbers again.
And then the community foundation, maybe.
Yes, we've got there, community foundation's got there quarterly report. Rest of them will get there here shortly. And then, do you know what our job is to keep up with that?
No, not yet, no.
You got a survivor?
Yeah.
Surprise.
By the way, now that you've got that job. Okay, we now have a budget workshop, this is our second one. And to approve the tax rate, you take a record vote, and we will do that after we do the budget workshop. See you, Bob. See y'all. Y'all wanna take a break real quick or anything, you're okay?